Okay, I'd like to call this October the 10th council meeting to order. And I would like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
(Singing) Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, record of attendance, everyone's here, no absent with regrets. Any declarations a conflict of interest, anyone? You can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, we're good. Approval of the agenda, please. Deputy Mayor, Councilor Cleveland, any discussion? Councilor Bell?
Just wondering if, can you share with me when the additions were made to the agenda? Because I went through the agenda package a week ago when I got it, and I opened it up at half an hour.
So on a Friday and a Tuesday?
On Tuesday?
Fridays and Tuesdays.
So they would have gone on on Tuesday?
Okay.
Just so that I know, so that I, if I have the opportunity in the future, that, because I...
Might have missed a couple?
I was quite surprised, yeah, thank you.
Good.
Your worship, that's part of our regular routine and policy. We issue the agenda on the Friday preceding the meeting, whether it's committee of the whole or council, and we reissue again on Tuesday because inevitably there is something that comes in a bit late. So apologize for that if anyone missed the late additions.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you. Approval of minutes, so we have town council September 12th, 2024, please. Councilor Bell? Deputy Mayor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, so we are at a public hearing portion of the agenda now, and what happens here is, I'll read the motion and what's before us. We actually have three before us this evening. And I will ask if anyone in the audience wants to come up and speak to the issue. We'll do one at a time, and then you can come up to the microphone, tell us your name and where you live, and then share whatever you want with council. Council does not make decisions during this portion, we don't discuss it during this portion, but right after that, we go into business arising. And so, right away, it'll be the same three items under the public hearing, and you can just, we'll have that discussion and go forward from there, okay? So, the first one is 9A, and Land Use Bylaw Amendment for the walking clinics and pharmacies. The proposed land use bylaw amendments, as amended, intended to align recent provincial changes that allow primary care at some local pharmacies with the rules of the land use bylaw. Would anyone like to speak to that? And I'll ask three times. Would anyone like to speak to the issue of the pharmacies? Okay, and I'll ask one more time, would anyone like to speak to the issue of the pharmacies? Okay, hearing no one, we'll move on to the next one. So 9B, Development Agreement on Myrtle Street. The proposed development agreement to allow for a comprehensively planned residential neighborhood. Would anyone like to speak to that? Okay, would you like to come up and tell us your name and where you're from?
My name is Jeremy Sullivan, I live at 4 Myrtle Street. I guess I have a few, I'd like to know why this can't be entered through Two Trask Avenue, which was a street that was meant to go through to Forest Street that ends at the field. Myrtle Street's a narrow street with no sidewalks, and I just, I just wonder why the town hasn't addressed that. I mean, if you're gonna let someone build 40 houses in a field with this narrow street that barely fits two cars and no sidewalk, with, and I mean, I see it already because there's hundreds of kids that walk through that field every day and walk right down the middle of the street, and we gotta wait for them to get out of the way. So I know that there's, there's already an issue with no sidewalk there. Then we've got a crosswalk just down in front of Mountain View that crosses and leads to the grass. The sidewalk actually ends at the cemetery, which is where it should be. I mean, none of the 90-year-old folks in the Mountain View go for a walk and cross there. Nobody really crosses there, but it's too close to have another crosswalk at the cemetery because they're too close together, they say, and there has to be more of a distance between them. So I just kinda wonder why the sidewalk ends on this side at the cemetery, it ends on this side at the cemetery, but we got a crosswalk there, so I mean, it just seems, that whole portion of Parade Street and Myrtle Street and Trask Avenue, it really feels like that should be the entrance to that field. Both streets are at the corner of this property. I just, to me, it seems, I mean, the subdivision itself is already unorthodox, there's no real plans, there's no buried pipes, there's no sidewalks, it's dirt roads and mini homes, single-family dwelling mini homes, which sounds to me like a trailer park without the That being said, I still think the entrance could be somewhere else. Two Trask was chopped off there at the entrance to the field and never went any further. That's a much better spot for the entrance to go. I don't think anybody wants an Almyrtle, and I don't think that the street has the infrastructure for it. There's no sidewalks, like I say, there's no, and if we're gonna put 40 new houses in that field, it seems to me that the town planner said, well, maybe five years down the road we'll put in a sidewalk. To me, that seems backwards. I think we should be addressing the street first and the people that live there that have to have this traffic going through and all, whatever's gonna go on in that field for the next 20 years, because it seems like it's gonna take quite a while. And I've never seen a subdivision with one, two houses a year. It seems kinda, seems kinda fishy. But usually, you build these subdivisions, there's plans, there's lots, there's houses for people to buy. These are gonna be rentals, these are not homes for people to buy. We're not building nice homes for people to move in that are gonna buy these homes. These are gonna be rentals, single-family dwelling rentals. And if it's gonna go there, it's gonna go there, but I don't see why the entrance can't be down at Two Trask where the road ends. This is a dead-end street that wasn't gonna go, ever gonna go through to Forest Street. It goes to a field which backs on the school. And again, the crosswalk issues, there's gonna be a lot more foot traffic coming out of there, there's gonna be a lot more road traffic coming out. I mean, there's two, just about two cars at every house, especially with families with two people that work, there's probably two vehicles, that's a lot of vehicles coming in and out of there, if you've got 40 houses. You don't have to be a mathematician to figure it out, but I think the street needs to be addressed, and not in five years. Are we gonna lose frontage on our homes? If there's gonna be a sidewalk and the street's gonna be widened, we're all gonna lose frontage. How far is it gonna go? Is the cherry tree in the front of my house gonna get torn out? I mean, there's a lot of unanswered questions, really. And I don't see any real plans for this subdivision, I see generic photos of mini homes, but this is, this is nothing like what it's gonna be. I mean, usually, there's a lot, there's a lot better set of plans put together for this. But I've already sort of, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I've already said things the last time I was here, and I think there are issues that should be addressed and that we should be informed of before 40 houses spring up quite close to us. That's just, that's all I got to say today.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, would someone else like to speak to this? I'll ask three times. Would anyone like to speak to the Myrtle Street issue? And one more time, would anybody like to speak to this issue? Okay, all right. We will move on to 9C, Development Agreement, Stars Road. The proposed development agreement to permit subdivision of 73 Stars Road intended to create a landlocked lot at 73 Stars Road. Would someone like to speak to that one? Anyone like to speak to the Stars Road issue? One more time, would anybody like to speak to the Stars Road issue? Okay, hearing no one, we will move on to business arising. Okay, so 10A, like I said, the same three issues. So the recommended motion under 10A is that council pass second reading to the proposed land use bylaw amendments, as amended, intended to align recent provincial changes that allow primary care at some local pharmacies with the rules of the land use bylaw. Can I have a motion, please, so we can discuss, okay? Councilor Cleveland, second by Councilor Daers. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Daers.
So personally, I see this as an opportunity to ease the strain on the healthcare system, and it's a natural progression of services. I mean, we've, we've seen the creation of nurse practitioners over the years, family practice nurses, even pharmacies that can provide services that previously were handled by family doctors and public health. So I think it's just a natural progression, and I think it's, it's one that probably makes good sense, so I'd be supporting.
Under this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, Development Agreement, 10B, that council pass second reading to the proposed development agreement to allow for a comprehensively planned residential neighborhood. We have a motion there? Okay, Deputy Mayor? Second by Councilor Bell. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
I'd like to have the, the town planner, Martin, come up and address perhaps some of the questions that were asked, because I think they're valid questions, and there are concerns that I think other people have as well. Could we have, could we have you come up and, and speak to some of this?
Many of the questions have, we've heard them throughout the process, whether it was at the open house, whether it was at the public participation session, or, you know, discussion we may have had before and after that with, with some members of the community. I think the biggest ones that I'd like to tackle is the subdivision piece. So, yes, it is a very, I wouldn't say very, but it is an uncommon, uncommon approach to, to land development where the intent in this situation is not to subdivide the land, like you would typically see in common subdivision where you would see a lot pattern and you would see a, a road that would ultimately be dedicated back into town ownership. In this case, the intent is to keep the lot under single ownership, and all the infrastructure, whether it is water, whether it's sewer, storm, or, or access, with or, or without, you know, pieces that come with access on typical public roads, that all will retain and will be retained in private ownership. Notwithstanding that, you know, we have developed what I would consider a very comprehensive set of guidelines, rules.
Can I just interrupt? Can you talk about the... Yeah, I think it's your facing...
The, the proposed development agreement is, is a comprehensive framework that, while comprehensive, all it really does, it allows, and it represents an allowance for the developer to progress to a next round, which would include detailed planning for infrastructure, detailed planning for design of distribution of the homes, potential open space, access, and obviously all the underground stuff. You know, the development agreement in itself doesn't give any permissions to, to build, you know, a single building without complying with, with the comprehensive rules. I mean, just looking at the, the set of requirements and the studies that we will be asking for, whether it's related to Myrtle Street, you know, we, and, and the applicant follows along and understand and willing to work with us that before submission of development permit, Councilor Cleveland, a transportation impact study will be necessary to determine, you know, what are we looking at in terms of improvements on Myrtle, if any, and their timing. The, you know, the citizen correctly pointed out that I might have mentioned that, we may not need to see the improvements on day one of the development, however, we may need to see some improvements to Myrtle Street on, along with intensity as intensity develops or increases on the site. At that point, we may wanna see certain elements of the Myrtle Street to evolve. That reminds me also, when I touch on the, on the Trask access, that is not a public right-of-way, that is a, that it very much looks like a, a public right-of-way, a public street, however, it is a portion of a public street, a private lot that is merely in access to parking lot for benefit of the building that is on that lot. So I tried to explain that last time, I obviously didn't do a good job, and, and so I thought it's important, I repeat that. But back to Myrtle, we are, we understand that it may appear like a narrow road, you know, it's about 20 feet, but if you do go around the town and area in general, 20-foot roads are fairly typical, and they do accommodate two-way traffic. Now, that does not to say that when we ask for a study by a professional engineer, the recommendation would not include certain upgrades and improvements to that connection for reasons that were, you know, stated by, by the resident. And so, we're not committing to one way or the other, we're prescribing a, a process by which the applicant may eventually gain the, sort of, the approval of development, but it's, it is a long road for them, they understand it, they're prepared to sort of go along on the journey with us, they're prepared to invest what I would consider probably significant resources in, in developing the technical designs that will either meet the standard rules that we have in place, or if they do not, they are still aligned with best practices for whatever that may be, sewer, storm, water, and, and access. And so, again, the best way, and I think Councilor Hetfield really said it well at, you know, a few weeks ago at council, it is a framework that allows the developer progress. There are many unknowns, we're prepared to answer them, so is the applicant. We understand change is not easy, it's difficult, but in many ways, and I'm saying it with, with, you know, with very much respect and empathy, this is a very good problem to have for this town. We have an opportunity to introduce 40 units, a single-touch homes, where, you know, we continually hear how desperate we are as a community for housing. And again, I'm, I'm saying that with, with, with much empathy in, in response to the comments we hear, because, yes, construction is challenging, and to live, you know, near that is an impact to quality of life, and, you know, I understand that, I empathize with that. We did include a range of rules in the development agreement that will try to mitigate that, whether it's dust, whether it's traffic, construction traffic, parking of, of construction workers. We have gone as far as that to try to mitigate these things. We have introduced a buffer between the existing residential lots and the future development here. Not much, but 20 feet is not insignificant. That simply may not or cannot accommodate or allow for development. So we, we believe that we struck a very reasonable balance between flexibility and requirements, hence the recommendation that was put forward, and it's in front of you today. I, I've said probably more than I wanted to, but hopefully that provides council with some understanding of what this development agreement represents and, and the idea behind the lack of information or the apparent lack of information that may be available at council at this stage of the approval process.
Okay. There are some things that make me uncomfortable, and I, I can only speak for myself here. The mention that they were trailers, like it was going to end up being a trailer park, is that at all the case? Are these not modular homes? Am I wrong in that, or is, or, because there is that part of it that certainly makes me uncomfortable, so that's the first thing.
I would suggest it's a really good question for the applicant, we have both represented, or both applicants in, in room today.
Okay.
But I'm gonna answer it as well, just from a planning perspective, the use of mobile home is not permitted on this, on, as part of this development agreement.
Okay. The other thing that really, and again, it's, it's a matter of fear of, of how this goes in terms of the way the town develops. There was also talk of dirt roads. To me, that's a deal breaker. It seriously is. We would require, in my mind, I would require, I can't speak for council, to me, in order to approve something like this, I would not approve something with the knowledge that it could end up being a dirt road in the middle of town.
I would also suggest it's a good question for the applicant, but if I may, among the 17 pages of the development agreement, again, there is a requirement for a, a study to be submitted by a professional engineer if the design does not align with town standard. The town standard is what the town standard is, whether it's Mile Estates, whether it's Pruse Grove, whether it's South and North End, we know what that generally is. If that doesn't align with that, we would need to see whatever design may be confirmed by professional. And just because a professional submits it, it doesn't mean that it would be approved. We still have to be satisfied with that design. I'll leave it at that, Councilor. It, you know, the, the notion of dirt road has been circulating in, in out there, right? I, I believe it's probably because of, many folks are maybe in a room today and follow the application are familiar that the proponent of the project is behind a, what I would consider for the area, a very successful project on Park Drive just outside of city limits, right? And, and there's a bit of a story why and how it became a dirt road, but I believe that's probably why many folks are concerned that that's what may happen in this location, and, and all I can say is that if that ever happens, our engineering department and professional engineers on the other side of the table would absolutely have to be comfortable with that. Would that ever be the case? I, I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Have you applicant?
Yeah, I really do.
Can we have the applicant, if, if you don't mind, one of you?
Hi.
Hi there. So, just tell us your name.
Oh, Philip, don't you mind?
All right. Can I?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. The two big concerns that I brought up that our planner tried to address, the, the idea of what the homes will look like, are they, are they modular? Is it, is it, it's not a trailer park?
No, it's not a trailer park. The intent is to, the nature of the proposed development is, is to create like a, a community style, like, and the board park makes, I think it kind of leans things in that direction, but it's more of a, trying to get away from board park. No, it's not intended to be a trailer park. They will be homes of various size and kind of orientation, you know, the discussion goes from, you know, mini homes that are like 800 square feet and upwards. You know, we're really focusing on the amenities that are within the area. Fantastic stuff happening in town, you know, three schools within walking distance, you know, all the stuff that's going on, the Mariners on Main, you know, we're trying to build this towards a, an attractive piece for young professionals in, in that kind of region, something that's, someone's gonna wanna move a family into. Big part of that is aesthetics. Oh, you guys know.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't, you know, love for you, because, and number two is, you can give the designation of the type of property it is, so it's not explained specifically, is it? Mini home, large home, all kinds of... You, you did say homes of various sizes.
Yeah.
From 800 square feet.
800 square feet and up.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
800 square feet and up, so it's a, it's not like a one-size-fits-all, so you did answer.
Yeah, and we're not looking at mini homes by any means, or trailers.
Yeah.
You know, permanent, permanent builds and so forth. Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to figure out what I said before that.
Do you think you were recording this?
I'm one of the applicants, yeah. I'm one of the applicants.
You're one of the applicants.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a second.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That's out of order. So he's, if you wanna come up and speak, you can speak, but he's just answering the councilor's questions. I've heard the answer that I wanted. Did you get that?
Actually, so have I.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry. Yeah, did you have another question?
You have a second, two questions?
No, I'm fine.
You're good? You, okay?
No, not for, not for you.
Nope.
I do have a, not for you, not, not.
Thank, yeah, you're good, thank you.
So I've heard the concerns from the people that live there, I've been over, actually, probably put more steps in walking over there in the last month because of issues that are happening on that street, and I, I agree completely, the street, it doesn't appear to be big enough. I'm 100% in favor of development, but I'm not in favor of putting a motion like this forward to another council that is gonna have to live with that. I would like to see more details before I would vote in favor of it. I won't be voting in favor of it, because I don't think there's enough details here. It's not to say that I wouldn't vote in favor of it moving forward, but I just don't, I don't hear enough answers that satisfy that it's going to be a development that, that we want. You know, at the first, at the first meeting when we asked about, it was asked about dirt roads or pavement, and they talked about like a mix of, I think it sounded like maybe a mix of recycled asphalt. Yeah, I, I've got quite a few concerns about, about it. I also agree with the size, the size of the street going in with 40 homes. I watch every day on the other side of that street at the high school and watch cars trying to go in and out on the same-sized street, and it just, it's not working there, I don't think it's gonna work on the other side. I'm 100% in favor of development, but I, I think there's too many unanswered questions that I don't feel comfortable passing this on to another council with this being our last meeting, so I won't, I won't be supporting it.
Councilor Heather?
Thank you. I guess I'm gonna be echoing Councilor Lesser's comments. I have a lot of concerns about this, I've listened to what the residents in the area have said, I attended the public meeting that was done for the planning, and listened to the concerns. I have concerns about the size of the street, I just have concerns about all the unanswered questions. It just seems like the plan is not well-developed, and it just leaves a lot of openness for things to happen, perhaps without it input from the, from the residents and from, from the town. So I just, I just think we just need a better plan, and like Councilor Lesser said, I don't wanna pass this on to, to a new council to have to deal with.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I regret to the lack of the sidewalk in the narrow street. I think it should be noted that in the report of the planner, he actually identifies those two issues and says that he recommends that an independent review is conducted to determine any upgrades that are required. So, that is covered under the application. I guess my background in negotiation and mediation tells me that there should be conversation between the developer and the people in the neighborhood, and I wonder if that could be facilitated because sometimes, you know, we've got, we've got two opposing views here, but I think sometimes if you sit down at the table with the person that you need the information from, you might be satisfied. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to table this issue until something like that could be considered.
Okay. We might, well, we'll hear from the deputy and then if we want to make a motion to table it.
Well, as we knock on doors and ask for votes over the next little bit, we sometime get away from who it is we're here to represent regardless of our own personal opinions. From what I've heard from the people who live there, and I know a few of them quite well, I work at the school, I see how busy that street is. It's WrestleMania sometimes at lunchtimes through there and other things. I believe this is our last say that we have here. If we do pass this now, everything else falls onto staff. The public won't have another say in this either. I've been at some different sessions and seen some questions asked, and I don't really feel confident that the answers that were given are very strong answers. To echo Counselor Lesser's comments, anything to do with housing in this town, we love to support. Definitely do not want to, you know, have anything negative against those people who want to develop things, but I see that street when there's a funeral or there's a wedding at Evangel, they lose half the street from over-parking. It's not adequate now. If you were to put sidewalks in, it will make it wider, as Jeremy said earlier. You've got trees on both sides that would have to come down, people would have to lose land. I also see a spot kind of between the end of the land that the property owners kind of own on Myrtle Street and just before the next house up there that is actually part of this whole piece of land, I guess, that I wonder why that wasn't considered as a personal role as well. And as always, when it comes back to anything in your onshore, you need to ask yourself, what would you do if this was your neighborhood? Would I be happy to live on a nice, quiet little neighborhood that a school popped up on that I wasn't really aware of or had any say in, and that was fine? And, you know, for a couple hours a day, that's already really busy. I just can't get my mind around, I came here tonight with an open mind to be convinced. I know the people who I represent and what they tell me, and as this plan currently stands, I don't feel comfortable enough to not have a say or not have the public have a say in the future down the road. Pat on the back to those developers who are trying to do something. I think if this came with a more polished plan, that I feel like if this was in my backyard, I'd be comfortable with, that I could support it, but currently as it stands, I will be voting nay.
Go ahead, counselor.
Given the comments that are made here at the table, I move that we table this issue.
Can I have a second, there? Okay. So, I just, I just want to be clear, the, it's the development agreement. It's not that I'm hearing from, it's not the development. Nobody at this table is saying no to a development. We know we need housing, we want housing, we want it to work. We just are hearing from the people and the folks at the table that we want to make sure that the plan is solid and that all the answers are there first. So, this shouldn't take too much time. Am I, am I sharing what you're conveying? Okay? Because it... No, but I don't want anybody to walk out of here thinking that we don't want this development, because we do. We just want to make sure that, that the issues that were brought up, and not just brought up by Mr. Solomon, like, you know, if we've gotten messages, we've had conversations and those types of things. And I'm going to say what the last person said, like, thank you for saying we want to develop this, because you know we need this desperately. We'll just get all those questions ironed out and take the next step. Because this development agreement is not saying, when we say yes to a development agreement, we're not saying, okay, now go build. We're not doing that at all, because everything else has to be addressed. So, when you're saying yes to the development agreement, you're saying we still have standards in the town, which are, you know, roads and, you know, access to water and sewer and all those pieces. And, you know, all the, all those things that come part and parcel with development. And we just want to make sure that those answers are ironed out. I would have just, I would have said yes in a flash with all of those pieces ironed out. Go ahead, deputy.
Just to speak to your comments, you are correct that things do come back for approval, and this is not a shovel in the ground, but they do not come to us and the public does not speak in them. And not that I don't, and I'd like it to be very clear that I'm not saying I do not trust our staff, because we have some great staff, and Martin has did some great work on this. This is no disrespect to you, but as someone who represents the public, if I'd want another say before, we're saying yes now, and I believe the cart is way in front of the horse. I am in agreement that this could be tabled, but for me to convince me, if the public is in support of me and votes me back in, I would need a more polished plan before I could say yes to this either now or in the future. But I would like to say thank you to the developers. Forty units in our town would be very well-served, but I just need to see more, and the people that I represent do not support this at this time.
Okay. Anyone out? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I think the way I see this is that what's happening here tonight is exactly why the choice was to go through a development agreement process, because this has become political, which is, you know, I mean, it's become political, and it's two weeks before an election. And so, to be clear, so that the electorate will understand where I'm coming from, I have been through the process since the first public participation meeting before it ever came to the planning committee. And I've, I've been carried along with the process. I've had questions that, I had the same questions answered to my satisfaction, with the caveat that I trust our staff and I trust the standards by which they work. And so, when I see a development agreement that has laid out in such specific detail all of the different requirements that are going to have to be met in order for any next step to be taken, I have the confidence to believe that our staff is professional and ethical enough to be able to manage the operation, the operation of the intent of the development agreement. It does ask me to trust, but it also takes the politics out of it. So, in fact, by authorizing a development agreement tonight or any other time that we choose to do it, what we are saying is that we believe in the vision of this proposal at a governance level, and that we trust our staff to be professional in carrying out that vision. And on that basis, unless I am given further information, should I be re-elected, I will be encouraging the next council to consider the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. We good? Okay. All those in favor?
What?
Of what?
There's two motions.
Oh, I'm, yes, yeah. So, is the table, the one that's to table, that kind of...
Did we have to defeat the original motion?
No, because the table of motion will, yeah, it'll take precedence. Did you want to?
One addition, you know, should the table, a motion table pass, what would be really beneficial is to understand table pending what? And when would council expect us to be, to be back? You know, I'm not asking for a specific date, but it would be nice to know table pending what? And then what, when we should be expected to return with, either with revisions through committee or simply back with the same application as it will be lifted off the table by certain date.
All right. So, I think what I was hearing, okay, go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
No, just a comment that that's going to be difficult to judge, given that many of the faces sitting at this table now might not be here in two weeks. So, I don't know how we can, how we can answer the question easily.
Yeah. So, I think, I think what I heard was, I know Jeff's going to, I think what I was hearing is that we're in favor of the development if it's, if it's the answers that we want are answered and the questions that the public brought forward are answered, sufficiently answered. So, it's just a, it's more information and understanding. So, after the election, we'll have staff, the CAO can reach out and say this is... Go ahead. You have a date in mind?
No, no, I was just going to kind of address the election issue is that, you know, we, nobody knows what the outcome will be. And so, if the motion is tabled, then post-election, staff will look at the situation, how much change we've had. I would expect if we have, we'll have at least, at least there'll be one new counselor, and there may be more, right? So, we'll assess the situation. Obviously, this is of considerable public interest, and I would think a new council would want to make sure that they're well-aware, so it would not probably be something that we would put on the November agenda, the very first agenda. So, you're probably looking at the December council meeting, but again, that's a discussion that we will have post-election through the orientation process with council, and I suspect that the amount of change will be a factor in how soon it comes back.
Am I writing saying that regardless, or whoever is on the new council would have to have been here tonight at this public hearing to be able to vote on it down the road? Or is that not?
So, there is another option, and I know we talked a little bit about that. Another option is to hold another public hearing.
Okay.
Right?
I think that would be proper.
So, just for everyone's benefit, so normally, to vote on a, on a motion on a planning matter, you have to have been present as a counselor at the public hearing. And so, where the election falls in between, potentially in between the public hearing and the decision, probably the thing to do would be to hold another public hearing, and so that all counselors of the day would have the opportunity to vote and be part of that.
And that all being said, in terms of timelines and those kind of things, I don't know about anyone else, but if I were to come back, if I do come back, I would want some more definitive answers to some of those questions that were asked. That's why there's a hesitation. We need, we need a clearer plan in order for this to make sense. I want this to make sense, but it needs to be clearer.
Yeah, we all do. Just needs to be clear. So, we can develop some of those questions and get them off to the planner.
I'm just trying to make this recorded, so we can...
Yep. Good. You're good there, Mr. Planner? You look like you want to get up and ask a question. Come on along.
It's not a question. May I, can I offer one more thing?
Sure.
Is it... What I, and I wanted to offer that initially to Counselor Cleveland's question, but one of the reasons that the framework is relatively, in some minds, vague, right, although it's extremely prescriptive as opposed to expectations for future approval stages, but while it may appear vague, is, and it's not just in Yarmouth, it's just in Nova Scotia, it's everywhere, where it is challenging to commit resources, private resources, to a project that, where the development rights do not allow for bulk of density development, right? It is much easier to commit resources that would offer some of the answers to many of the questions as it relates to road, Myrtle, sidewalk, look and feel of the community, where there is a understanding that the allowance for density or 30, 20, 40 units is in place. I just want to share that. If there are any questions, happy to answer, but I thought it's an important piece of information that may perhaps explain why some of the, some of the studies are outstanding and will be, will be looked at later on. It is because at this point, without subdivision, one can build one unit on the land.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's the inherent fear that something, we're going to say yes tonight, and then 40 places are going to be built. That's not the case. All we're saying tonight is, and correct me if I'm wrong, all we're saying tonight under development agreement is that we, it can happen there.
Subject to.
Subject to. And there are so many other things that have to be ticked off before you can do it. So, it's, it's...
And your worship, I didn't, my intent to offer this last piece of information is not to debate.
No, no, no.
Is not to argue. It was purely, I thought, information that was important.
Yeah.
That wasn't really conveyed in the report, and I felt it's important that both parties heard that.
Yeah. And it's not, I'm not debating, I'm just saying, like, it's, we're saying, let's do this, but each step along the way, there are processes in place that say it stops if you can't do A, B, and C, which go against the town standards, right?
Or best practices confirmed by professionals.
Exactly. Yeah. So, everything's in place, we just have to get past this hump, and we're looking for answers to those questions before we do the development agreement. That's, that's all. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Deputy?
So, just to be clear for the people in the crowd and those watching, if we vote to table this, basically, all we're saying is that it's put on the table after the election, it will be dealt with by whatever council that will be.
Absolutely.
Just to be clear.
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, Counselor Bell.
I just wanted to make the observation that we have, we currently are breaking ground on a new multi-unit development project on Shaw Avenue that required significant concessions from council in order to, in order to approve it. It was deficient in a number of areas, certainly in parking, but we recognize that there, that we have to plan for the future, not just for today, and that we have to, we have to recognize that in order to get to that future, we have to start making incremental steps or we're never going to get there. So, I'm just making the observation that this isn't the first time that we have as a council deliberated and made a decision to trust. So, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Did you, are you, is everyone okay? Because I have to just ask council, because it's not, are we okay with this gentleman? Yep, come on up.
I'm a little confused from the, from the three meetings I've been to, but doesn't the town planner work for the town?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just a little confused, yeah.
Thanks. One more question I have.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, the motion on the table is to table this until next council. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So, it'll, just so we know, it'll come right, it'll come back, like, in less than two months. Okay? All right. And then, public hearing three. So, business arising, said my on 73 Stars Road, 10C, that council passed second reading to the proposed development agreement to permit subdivision of 73 Stars Road intended to create a landlocked... Contrary? Motion carried, okay. So it'll, just so we know, it'll come right, it'll come back, like in less than two months. Okay, all right. And then public hearing three, so business arising said my on 73 Stars Road, 10C, that council passed second reading to the proposed development agreement to permit subdivision of 73 Stars Road intended to create a landlocked lot at 73 Stars Road. Okay, so no one wanted to speak to that one. So can I have a motion on this, please? Counselor Heather, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Gill.
Just, just a comment that it is a little bit unorthodox to have a landlocked lot, but in reading the development agreement, proposed development agreement, it seems as if there's sufficient number of safe, safety measures and, and the conditions that have been included by the planner that, that makes sense. And I understand that the, the occupants are the, this is to, so that the people that have a business there can gain some autonomy over the property. So I, I think, given the, the conditions that are, or the requirements that need to be met, I'm satisfied that we should, we should pass.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, so new business, 911 calls at the hospital. The recommended motion is that council take further steps with regard to the escalation of 911 calls from the hospital being received by the RCMP in an effort to rectify the ongoing issue. So we sent a letter to the, okay, go ahead. Thank you, deputy, seconded by Counselor Heather. So we, we did do a, thank you, Mr. Planner? Exactly. Thanks, gentlemen. So we sent a letter to, to the hospital asking, would you be able to do something different? Because when they hit nine, their system often goes to the RCMP when they hit nine to get out. And when the RCMP responds, they have to go to the hospital because it's a 911 call. It not only costs a lot of money, we're short on members as it is, they're not fully staffed, they've been up there multiple times, and it's just, it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money, taking away from their resources. So we needed something to be done. We sent the letter, I believe, you can correct me, CAO, if I'm wrong, but if, we received a letter back saying, you know, we're looking at it, or we were going to do something, and the calls have gone up. In a nutshell, the calls have gone up, so we need to take the next steps. I don't think it's another call to the hospital, obviously that didn't work. So we have to figure out what's the next step? Who does that letter have to go to, or who do I have to chat with? It's, it's just, it's gone beyond now. Go ahead, Counselor Bell.
Thank you, your worship, yeah. So at the Police Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, in the quarterly report of the, I believe it was 74 911 calls that they responded to, more than 50 of them went to the hospital.
Yeah.
In a quarter.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so I think we need to escalate beyond the, the clinical site manager and, and ask at a higher level for this to be taken seriously.
Okay. So anybody else, anyone else? We'll have to figure that out, who it is. Go ahead.
Your worship, if I was to make a suggestion on who it, who it is, I might say the Deputy Minister of the Department of Justice and the Deputy Minister of the Department of Health. Address it to both of them. I don't think this should require the minister's attention, or Deputy Ministers, Chief of Staff, or the, for the departments. They should be able to recognize the disruption that this issue causes us, and I suspect is causing other communities. So that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, and I have, I can reach out this week to, to other communities to see if that is an issue, but they may not, they may have a different system. Go ahead, deputy.
I think this speaks to another issue just in general, that people often think just because, you know, we work closely with the provincial government or the hospital and everything, when, when an issue comes up, we can just pick up a phone and kind of direct line and get it done, and here we are, how many months later? And I also feel the same about housing, to be, to be honest. I know we have a lot of people on a list that seem to stay there for a very long time, and people seem to come off that list and get rid of an apartment and come back in and get another one, or people from out of province come, and when we ask for questions to be answered, it's a pass the buck and it doesn't really come down. But guess what? When our bills come in from the province, we don't have that option to loudly gag around and not pay them. So, you know, there needs to be better communication between the two on many issues, I think, and this just speaks to it. You know, like, here it is, as simple as changing, a push nine and it doesn't go somewhere has been a nine-month process, like.
So, so it's frustrating for, for the RCMP, but it's frustrating for us. It's, 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 it's hard to, when you have to push uphill on everything, and, and the deputy just said it, housing, healthcare, healthcare is off the charts. We can't touch it, like, we, we can't touch it. So all we can do is, is make sure that, that we set the table for the entities that can do, you know, a little bit of mental health stuff and, and give those permissions. So it's, it's, you're right, deputy, 1,000%. I'll say this one about the RCMP too, another, another piece is, it's the mental, it's the mental health piece, where they can no longer just, I don't want to say arrest somebody, but sometimes they're not arrested, they're just trying to help a situation, and bringing somebody to the hospital, used to be, they would drop them off at, at the mental health unit, now they don't. They have to sit there sometimes between, what was it, Counselor Bell? Between four and six hours? Now, we know four to six hours when you have two people on duty, now you have one person on duty, and we're paying, we're paying for that. Like, the taxpayers are paying for them to sit, and, and they do their job. The RCMP does their job well, so the, the fight for mental health is, is an important one. So any other comments on the 911 piece? And we will, we'll get this done. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, okay. So 11B, the pride crosswalk, and the recommendation there is that council receive and place on file. I have that motion? Okay, moved, any seconders? Need a seconder to get it on the line, thank you. All right, go ahead, I think Counselor Bell, yours was on.
Oh, okay, your worship, thank you. Maybe it would be better for me to claim the floor after we've voted on this motion? Maybe, would it be appropriate for me to, to have another motion afterwards? Or to amend this motion? My, my, I will amend, I will seek to amend the motion. I think that this is an appropriate issue to refer to our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, that's what they're there for. Under F and G of their terms of reference, it says to advise and make recommendations about strategies designed to achieve the objectives of the EDI Plan. I think this is a very important issue to the LGBTQ community. Clearly, we have gotten direction and authority from our traffic authority and from Robert Hurd, who is the Manager of Traffic and Engineering and Road Safety for Public Works Nova Scotia, who says, quote, "We don't approve the installation of rainbow or other non-standard crosswalk markings on provincial roads. And when we encounter a municipality that has deviated from the standard, we contact them to provide our position." So I, in good conscience as a council member, I, I, I can't entertain a motion or an idea of going against what our traffic authority has told us. But I also am an ally of the LGBTQ community. It's important to me, so it's full stop, I am an ally. And I believe this town has demonstrated that it is an ally as well. I remember speaking on your behalf, on council's behalf, at the, at a protest demonstration in protest of the actions against trans youth last year. And I said at that, we, we had just approved the Equity, Diversion and Inclusion Committee, we just, but we didn't, you know, we hadn't actionized, actionalized that, we had it, but we hadn't. And I said that it was so important that allies transform rhetoric into action. And that, that by the council approving this action of developing a committee that is representative of marginalized communities, we would, we would create action from the rhetoric. So I, I would like to see this referred to our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the idea that, that they, that include the traffic authority memo in the addendum, and that we request to consult with them as appropriate, for them to consult and bring back at least three options for the creation of a rainbow that connects a public space in this community to one of, you know, to, to the town's resources, somehow the town hall, Frost Park. That's in their hands to bring back to us. But that would, that would be my recommendation. And I come to this from the place of, what's the goal here? Which is how I started at the council table three years ago. It was the first question that I was asked, and my answer was, we have to stay focused on what is the goal here? And I believe that if the goal here is to provide marginalized communities a public recognition of the, their space in our community and that we are allies with them, then we can find a compromise, and this is what I said in July when this subject first came up, and it, you know, my direction was not followed. So here we are in October, and now we have the traffic authority's authority. And I, I want to see an opportunity for the town to work with the committee that we have established in order to come to a resolution to this issue that everybody can be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can, we can probably, you're going to help me with this one.
Okay.
All right, so we, Mr. Solicitor? So we can, we can do this recommended motion because we're going to place this on file, because we're not, and then do it? Or should we do the?
Just propose an amendment.
Okay, so we can, yeah, so I need a seconder on the amendment. Okay, Counselor Lesser? All right, so we can just go with the, yes, right.
Was, was the, the motion made, or was it just a recommended motion?
Yep, to get the discussion on the floor. Just following rules, his name's Robert. Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you. This has been kicked around a lot, for sure. You know, I'm, I'm really very much in favor of having some kind of a recognition. I just don't know that the crosswalk is the be all, end all, and it shouldn't be. I mean, just because other communities do it, shouldn't we not find a better way to recognize our support? You know, I was, I was very much involved in both the organization and execution of the very first Pride celebrations that took place several years, a number of years ago at Beacon, or no, Milton Ballfield. And it was a great day, it was a really good day. And, and I could see that there's, you know, there, there might be options out there. And I really like the idea that we involve our committee, the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, let them receive the recommendations from the community as to, or suggestions from the community as to how we could do this. But we can't, I don't believe that we can just override the decision of our traffic authority and, and that of the provincial authority and create a crosswalk which doesn't meet the standards and may in fact create a situation of liability for the town of Yarmouth. So I, I think Counselor Hatfield's suggestion that we refer this to the committee is a great one, and I'd like to see it move ahead.
Okay, Counselor Lesser?
Quite a bit to say. I appreciate the amendment very much. Just reading the letter, I was quite bothered by some of what was in it. Like, giving the examples of confusion of pedestrians uncertain that they have the right of way. I'm not sure why people would, like, people are used to all over the world walking through pride crosswalks, I don't know how, like, I don't know of any situation, and I can't find it in every search, that, that anybody's been hurt on a pride crosswalk, walking across it. I can find examples where people have been hurt on a pride crosswalk because they're gay. That's the problem, but not because of, of traffic. Disorientating for people with vision impairments and their guide dogs. I still have asked the question and haven't got an answer, what 66% means? This, this came out from, on July 23rd, and in August we had 50%, then we went to 66%. I'm, I'm still confused as to what was done. It seems like one thing was done, it was a letter to one person at the department, and then extra things added in here. But I researched that as well. CNIB is in favor of pride crosswalks, it's in their 2023 report. Slip and skid resistance is decreased in wet conditions, particularly where large amounts of paint cover the crosswalk. If that's the case, I think we make the downtown not accessible. We'll get rid of the parking spots that are for accessibility. Those are also painted with large amounts of paint, but we allow people to do that. My mother uses those. If my mother was trans, gay, part of the lesbian, gay community, I, I would be fighting for that too. I don't have the lived experience, and I, I don't think I'm in a position to say that I can speak on behalf of that community and figure out what's best. I do like Counselor Hatfield's recommendation that it goes to equity, diversity and inclusion, because that does have a cross, a cross selection of everybody, different, different voices from marginalized communities. And then to hinder the ability of a vehicle's detection system to recognize or react properly. That sounds so futuristic, like, we're, we're talking about a vehicle that isn't going to recognize color, like, I mean, I don't, my vehicle just drives, I, I look after driving it and looking to the future, like, I don't know, it just seems to me like there's a lot in here that just suggests that it just doesn't want to be done. And that bothers me. I'm going to stop talking at that point.
Okay.
Your worship?
Yes.
So I just want to point out that those bullets came from the study. Those are not bullets that your traffic authority dreamed up. Those are within the non-standard pavement markings for crosswalks study that was done. And Mr. Hurd, I believe it is, from the, from the provincial, yeah, Mr. Hurd, he was actually on the steering committee that did that study. So he's well informed on the, on the issue and was able to speak to our traffic authority about, about these issues. And I want to say, and I think I'm safe to say, that, that our traffic authority is, is an ally to equity-seeking communities. I've talked to him about how do we recognize, you know, the, the values of our community? You know, he's also the Director of Operational Services, and, and under that comes a lot of our infrastructure. And, you know, they're, they're willing to do what council wants in terms of, you know, putting out, putting out benches, raising flags, doing whatever it is that signals our values as a community. But when it comes to traffic markings, he feels strongly that we need to follow the, follow the standards that exist. And if those standards change, and if the, the TAC committee adopts a position that, that non-standard markings of whatever nature are acceptable, then you'll see, you'll see those, those markings in our community. And I'll point out, just as an example, you'll probably all remember a few years ago that we had bright yellow crosswalk signs in our downtown. Those are all gone because they don't comply with the uniform standards, right? Those, those were crosswalk signs that may, in some other jurisdiction, qualify as, as acceptable crosswalk signs, but they don't in our jurisdiction. And so those were changed to protect the town in the event that somebody was struck on a crosswalk and that a, a, a clever lawyer would say, hey, that doesn't comply with the standards, the town owns some liability. And here's the thing, you can. And here's the thing, you can, if the town is 1% negligent in a lawsuit, doesn't mean we pay 1% of the, of an award. A judge's position is to make sure that an injured party is properly compensated. And if we happen to have the deepest pockets, 1% can be enough to, to have us, the town, pay, pay significant awards. So our insurer wants us to, to comply with standards, and, and, and so we do, we strive to. And so, you know, I know this is an important issue, the, the recognition, the, the, the acceptance, the, the presence of, of diversity in our community. And I can tell you that, that whatever the committee comes up with, provided that it allows us to maintain the standards, you know, around traffic markings or traffic signs, you know, we will get it done. We will get it done to, to your satisfaction and to the community's satisfaction. There's just, there are some lines unfortunately, and regrettably, that we don't have direction or standards that we can, that we can easily comply with. So I apologize, I know this is a difficult issue for council. And I know it's something that, that matters to people. And, and, you know, what we strive to do is, is, is deliver for you on the standards and, and, you know, the values that you, that you ask us to. And so it's, it's disappointing, but I respect the Traffic Authority's position. I think it's the right position for the town. But again, come up with something through the committee, and we'll make sure it happens.
Counselor Lesser?
Sorry, I said it was done and I'm not. I would like to just, I would like people to look at Halifax Airport, which is a federally-owned building with a huge Pride crosswalk going from one side to the other. Look at Barrington, which is the provincial highway that goes through the community. It's got a rainbow crosswalk, and it's provincially owned. So I, I don't know who this Rob guy is, and, you know, can respect that, but the province isn't following, and the federal government's not following the own guidelines there. And, and it takes courage to do something that is not the norm, and that's how change happens. And I, yeah, I'm quite disappointed by this.
Counselor Dyer?
Yeah, just two things. I'm, to follow up with the comments from the CAO regarding the crosswalk signs, the high-visibility crosswalk signs that previously existed in the downtown core. I believe those were restricted to certain conditions, and I think, believe it had to be a school zone that, that they could be used. And the reason they were removed is once it was identified that they weren't a valid signage for the regular crosswalks in the downtown area. And the reason they were removed is because of the liability that it created. And as, you know, it's, it's, it's a real thing. I wonder if, rather than trying to, I mean, there's not one person sitting at this table, I think, that's opposed to having something that recognizes what we're looking for here. But maybe that the people that are, that are insistent that it be a crosswalk as opposed to some other means of identifying or recognizing the community, what they should be looking for is some way to modify the manual of Uniform Traffic Control vices for Canada. Maybe they should be making application to have Pride crosswalks included as a, as a legal, a legal entity. But I, I still, I, I just think, you know, if there's even a chance that there's liability associated with this, I, I don't see how we could move forward with it. So I'm, I'm sticking to my, my previous comments that this should be going to the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Committee, and they should be reaching out to the community for options.
Thank you. It, so you've had your hand up, it's not a public meeting, but.
Okay. I was, I was entirely straight, I was.
But I can ask folks if they.
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tell us who you are.
My name is Dylan Nickerson. I am a proud two-spirit individual and father of two queer children. I have spent the entire day speaking with different communities around Nova Scotia who have installed one of these rainbow crosswalks, and I'm proud to report that not one of them have had any incidences of slippage, of blind seeing eye dogs going AWOL, Teslas curbing onto the sidewalk. This extends outside of the province, of course. I've lived all across this country. I've navigated hundreds of these things myself. I've seen dozens of different designs, including designs that don't take up the entirety of the crosswalk, but simply highlight the white lines with a bit of color. And I'd just like to put forward that these aren't simply lines of paint. These are symbols of hope for 2S LGBTQIA individuals, including myself and my kids, who have experienced a rapid decrease in our quality of life since moving here from Victoria, B.C., where they are celebrated, they are accepted, they are welcomed. Here it feels like we're tolerated. And the, my child just got out of Maple Grove School and missed half of a year of school because of the rampant bullying that goes on to trans children and everything else. So I spoke to the high school today, or the Tri-County Regional Centre for Education, and I will be organizing a rainbow crosswalk for the high school. I'll pay for it myself if I have to, but that is the level of commitment I'd like to see from certain individuals in these seats of power. Because having it simply written off for the safety concerns that were based on speculation, I might add, there's no evidence to suggest that any of these things have happened anywhere. So I would like to see more evidence-based policy rather than speculation-based policy. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna say this. I, I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you came from B.C. and that's how you feel here. I am gonna speak for all of us. That, that saddens all of us, I can tell you that. Because we've, we've tried to do what we can do to make, you can't make any place a safe place. You just have to take steps and, and hope that the people come along. And I, we do things together, but the flagpole's always been mine. And, and I was the first mayor to put up that pride flag. It had, it had never flown in this town before. But we put it up, and, you know, I don't care if it's, if it's a pride flag, or, or Red Cross, or, or whatever it is, it's, it's never just a, a flag. It's, like you said, it's a symbol of hope. The message is always that this, this is, we're taking every step to be a safe community, an inclusive community. We can't force people into, we can't force people. But that's, but that's what happens. And, and, you know, Black History Month, we've, we've done a, a lot of stuff with that, with, with, you know, the indigenous people. We, we're just taking steps to make sure that happens. So the flag went up. You know, we, we shut down the streets for the first time ever to have the parade. And I remember marching front and center in that. And you put me on a Dunkin' booth, you probably won't put me on Dunkin' booth right now, but we, you know, I went on the Dunkin' booth that year at, at the big party in Coronation Park, and didn't get to plug my nose before I went under. So, you know, that was painful. And, and we did the bench, and we, so we're trying to, and it's not to do stuff, I think you hear what I'm saying. We're not doing stuff to do it. We're doing it to say to the community, like, we, we keep adding elements. What we're saying here is our, our values at this table align. We want a safe community, we want an inclusive community, but we are not going to do it at the risk of safety. And I hear what you're saying, that, you know, you want, you want evidence-based. Right now, the Provincial Traffic Authority is telling us this is, and, and I can say this again, I know that there's been no accidents. My grandfather, I, I don't think my grandfather ever put on a signal light in his life. And we would always say, you need to, you need to use your signal light. And he said, I've never caused an act, he said, I've never been in an accident. And I said, no, you've caused 100, you know, so it's that whole insurance piece for us? There may never be but that one chance, and our CAO was saying that one chance, that it just, the community's paying for that. And we're not talking 100,000. We're talking millions of dollars because the town's pockets are, are deep.
You brought up the liability issue, you referenced the harness relations.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so.
It's near Missender, so.
Yeah, so.
The thing is, one is giving a hell of a degree, it seems like a little bit of hovering.
It, it, it does, doesn't it? And, and yet, somebody said that, you know, there's Pride crosswalks all over the world, and there are. And they, nothing may happen, but there's bump oats all over the world too. And the bump oats were built, I wish my engineer was here because he explains it really, really well. The bump oats, believe it or not, are there for safety. They slow people down, they slow traffic down, they make the distance from point A to point B on a crosswalk much shorter and much more visible for, for people to walk. So there's a, there's a reason be behind those.
The bump oats themselves, the harness relations that's.
Yeah.
Above the ground, that's.
Yeah, that's the.
It was just the.
Yeah, gotcha. So, so in any case, the, the motion put forward by, by Counselor Bell, I really like it as well, because we're not saying no to something. And, and I will tell you that the people sitting on that committee, I'm excited about what they can do at a diversity committee. I mean, they might just say, paint a whole roof, like, paint the trail, paint whatever, but do something that says, and I think it'll be bigger than a crosswalk, I do, because they don't think small. I think it's gonna be bigger and bolder than a crosswalk, and we talk about change happening. Change does happen. But what if we're the first community to say, we're gonna stick with our guns for the safety, and we're gonna do something really cool that maybe other communities can, and we're the first place to do it? So, you know, that's the, that's the option there. Yeah, yeah, okay. So let's, let's vote on the amendment. You know what the amendment is? It's Counselor Bell's motion, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then the motion to receive and place on file. Yeah. Yeah, okay. So did you get that? It's to receive and place on file and to do Bell's motion, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Reports, Council Advisory Committee, so Committee of the Whole, that's you there, deputy?
Recommended motion that council direct the CAO to submit a Housing Acceleration Fund Action Plan that includes initiatives as generally outlined in Attachment A, along with all additional required documentation to the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation as a municipality's application under the Housing Accelerator Fund Program, and authorize the CAO to enter into contributing agreements or amendments, agreements that may be required should the municipality be approved for funding under the program.
I'll second that.
You can only second it if you can repeat it without looking.
That's a big one.
Deputy, you probably couldn't even read it the same way again. But we know what it is, and it's, it's been a lot of work put in by, by Natalie and, and the staff upstairs and.
And for those who don't know what that is, that, that gives us, I think, around 2.3, 2.4 million dollars that would be incentives for people who want to come and invest here based on certain criteria of either affordability or other things. That could be, I believe, anywhere from 20,000 per unit to almost 60 or 59. And just to have any program that helps housing would be a great thing here. So I'm glad, and very thank you to Natalie and, and her crew for all the work that went into it. If anybody wants to see it, it's, it's online, it's a very extensive report, and very thankful for the work that staff did on this, and happy that we're here for round two.
Awesome. So moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy.
Recommended motion that council respond to the letter received from Garenet Horton regarding 42 Ergall Street.
Moved and seconded. I did, just so you know, I think I sent you a note, but I did give them a call and just say, this is what's happening. And there was a lot of action on the corner too this morning, I saw that. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council provide letter of support to Colonel Yarmouth and refer the financial request of $300,000 for, or over three years to budget.
Seconded by Counselor Heather. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve the fall 2024 grants as presented.
Seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council pass first reading to amend the parking violations by law to be consistent with the Motor Vehicle Act penalties.
Yeah, that was just a money, right, the, the, yeah, the penalties, yeah, the fines, okay? Seconder? Okay, Counselor Bell? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve the amendments to the Mariner Center Development Agreement, which outlines the change order approvals in Schedule D.
Seconded by Counselor Heather. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion, the council approve the proposed Yarmouth International Airport Inter-Municipal Agreement.
Yeah, so my understanding is that one of our partner municipalities wishes to have further discussion on this, so perhaps to table this until the, the future council meeting.
I respect. Motion to table.
Yeah, do you want, do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, deputy, and seconded by Counselor Bell, to table this motion to a future council meeting? Okay? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
And the council proceed with the purchase of a 2022 Pierce ladder truck from the East Can Fire Truck, Inc., for $1,100,000 plus HSD.
Okay, 2020. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, dear. Go, go ahead, Counselor.
Just for anybody that might be watching, as we go through these, I know I've heard from people before that have said, all of this is online, you can see it, and they, everything has been discussed a lot, like at council, it's my last time probably to say this, so I wanted to make sure that, I said it one more time, that everything that we discuss at council is discuss, or sorry, at council meetings, is discussed in Committee of the Whole prior, and that's where all the debates and stuff takes place. So it's not like we're just getting a motion in front of us and making a, a big decision on spending a lot of money at one time. It comes with a lot of thought prior to this, so.
And it's, that's online, that's online. Yeah, the, the Committee of the Whole meetings are, it is where all the discussion takes place, and they are online. You can just take a peek at those on, on the website. What's that? Oh, YouTube? Gee. I had, never mind, I won't even go there. Planning Advisory, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You were gonna, you were gonna question if the mayor called.
I was, I thought you were moving on.
Tricked ya. Okay, Planning Advisory, Counselor Cleveland.
All right, thank you, your worship. Recommended motion that council pass first reading to the proposed development agreement, Attachment One, to allow for seven short-term rental units at 600 Main Street.
Okay, so moved, can I have a seconder?
Seconder.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion.
Uh huh.
And the amendment would be, and this was after a discussion with, with the planner, the amendment would be, motion to amend the proposed development agreement, Attachment Number One, to insert a new section 2.7, as per the following. Parking requirements, that the minimum number of onsite parking spaces is three, that that's the minimum number. The rationale behind that would be that, you'll see that the application is for seven Airbnb units, and in this case, the, the applicant has an informal agreement that's been in place for some 10 years with the neighboring property to provide overflow parking. And so it wouldn't, wouldn't force him into a situation where he had, had to pay the, the parking and lieu funds to the town of Yarmouth for not having sufficient parking for the facility, so.
I need a seconder for that one.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm sorry, I.
No, no, no.
Jumped the gun there. And, and the case that, you know, he's had a 10-year informal agreement, I'm told that if that agreement ever expires, that, that in fact he would have to revert back to paying the town for the offsite parking. Makes sense?
Sort of.
Okay, so if you can't provide enough parking, of course, and maybe the CAO can explain better.
Is it on, no, I understand the, the concept.
Okay.
I, I don't, I'm just, I'm just wondering, he has three now. I, I don't, um, I'm just, I'm just wondering, he has three now.
Yes.
Right? But, but in 10 years, that might lapse because of their agreement, their agreement might lapse, okay?
Yep.
So if he, if that agreement lapses, he has to pay the town. Okay, look at that. See that? Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, if, if the, if the amendment passes, then that's the agreement. He has to provide a minimum of three spaces, period. But he's running a business. And, and it doesn't make sense for him, or maybe it does, he's the business owner. If he, if, if his business makes sense to have three parking spaces for seven units, and he has shown that he has an informal arrangement with the neighbor that allows that business to be successful, great. If that informal agreement lapses, then he's going to have a business problem that he will have to resolve, and that may involve a partnership with another neighbor. It may involve purchasing other land. It may involve reducing the number of units. But that's a business problem that he will have. And I, and I, and I kind of equate this to, to some progressive changes that we made to the land use bylaw a few years ago with, and take Canay and Tire as an example, not to call them out, but, um, they used to put, and they still do, put pallets of, of mulch and fertilizer and whatnot in the parking lot in the spring. And we would send them letters because that removed parking spaces that were required under our land use bylaw. And we finally, council came to the conclusion that we don't need to tell business how to be business.
Thank you.
Right? And so if it makes more sense, if it, if it drives their business to have fertilizer and mulch in a parking space rather than a customer, they know what they're doing. And I would say the same is true of this property owner. He has seven Airbnb or rental units or whatever in his, in his property. If he can make it work with three onsite and has arrangements for, for the balance, and that's going to drive his business, then I, I support, obviously, the, the recommendation that came forward, that we, that we don't tell him how to run his business, but that we trust that he knows what he's doing.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, why are we telling them at all? Why does he even have to have three? That's, that's my question. I'm just having a hard time telling businesses what you have to do. If, if they don't have parking, he doesn't have business. So now we're telling him he has to have three. So I'm just saying, convince me. Because, because I'm just, I'm, I'm here to, listen, go ahead, he's gonna...
Need to convince you, I think that's a planning issue that would be, or an answer that would come from the planner. You know, the, I think the regulations state that you have to have parking for your facility. And now, yeah, and that's all it is.
Yeah, come on up. It's, it's the same as, like, the whole mall thing that the CAO is talking about?
It's a great question. I'll give you a simple answer. Right now, the development agreement requires seven stalls.
I'm so happy right now, I'm good with three.
Yeah.
I'm good with three.
And so we felt that, um, the three, which he can accommodate, and, and then some, because there's some flexibility, I think he can do a bit more than that on his site, is a reasonable compromise. I, I, that's at least what I'm reading from the motion.
And I'm just saying, like, why, why any? But if it's, it's usually seven, like, I can be good with three. I'm just not a big fan of telling people, I, I, I mean, I guess you go to the city and people will say, this isn't Halifax, but you know what? We're growing, and we're growing fast. So, you know, you have folks saying, well, that, this business or that business has, there's parking everywhere, there's cars everywhere, of course, because it's growth. So we don't want to, we don't want to hinder, because he's going to be hindered anyway if he doesn't have a place to park. First thing I look for at an Airbnb is, I need, I need, I need princess parking. You need to stop laughing, that's the mayor.
This council actually is very, very progressive on parking. One of the few places in Canada that waived all requirements for commercial parking. The, the disconnect here is that other places would consider seven-unit Airbnb a commercial enterprise or commercial use. Here, we still consider it residential, something we can look into later on, but if that would be considered a commercial, they would need, and it would be completely up to them.
See? Just took that pile and might have cleared it right up for me. Go ahead, deputy.
I'm just wondering when this amendment kind of came through. I know a lot of us do our homework, and I know I read and kind of prepare, and we had talked earlier about the, the Tuesday deadline or whatnot, and just sometimes I worry about precedent when we, when we do these things, and although this one is a no-brainer, I'm just wondering if it wasn't because, you know, you come prepared, you do your reading, and then you're about to vote on something, which, as I said, this one's pretty easy, but just, just kind of moving forward sometimes, I wonder if there's a better way to do business when it comes to this, but, you know, if it could come down earlier, if we do have it, that it's available to us. So when I come, I'm ready, I don't feel like I'm overwhelmed, and I'll be voting yes either way on this one, but just saying for other things, moving forward, it might be smart to think ahead.
I'm, I'm with it, too. It must have just come up, like, yeah.
So, my understanding, you know, try to answer that if I can jump in, is, is my understanding, there was a conversation, Counselor Derris had some questions, and, and so the planner came down to see me today, and we were literally meeting here earlier, and he was explaining to me, I called him into the council chambers to explain to me exactly, so I understood exactly what we were doing here. So this is a result of a counselor inquiry. It wasn't something that, that we were holding back, but, you know, good ideas emerge, and it can emerge here at the table, right, as, you know, without any, any notice. So apologize if we, if we think of, think of better ideas, we'll try to get them out to you. The idea is not to ambush you, but to, to give you the best advice we can, and I think this is better advice.
Go ahead.
And just to follow up on that, you know, this wasn't a, an attempt to, to torpedo anything, but it didn't make sense, I guess, to, in conversation with the planner, to, to pass the development agreement, and then we, you know, a month later, submitted an amendment. So, you know, it's, yeah, so I'm, that's why it was sort of, it came to the table tonight. It seemed like, you know, it seemed like the thing to do to make, to facilitate the passing of the approval of the development agreement.
You know what this says to me? And it's true, and I'm, I mean, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's, it's a good one. But we, we do our homework. We do our homework, so if we see something different, it's like, whoa, stop the presses. So, it's all good. All right, we have to vote on that one? Everybody okay?
Can I make a comment?
You sure can.
The motion is first reading, so this is still going to go to public hearing. Yeah, just so you're aware, like, this isn't the last kick at the can or anything like that. Just so you're aware, that, you know, it could have come up at a different, I'm just saying.
But it's, it might be easier to do it now and then push it to the hearing. Okay? So we're voting on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And then, uh, we're voting on the amendment and this together, reading to proposed development agreement to allow for seven short-term rental units at 600 Main Street. So that's, it's just, we're just adding that piece to, to add the parking, okay? So we're good with those two together? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Go ahead there, counselor.
Recommended motion that council pass first reading to the proposed development agreement, attachment one, and you can find that, anybody who's looking can find all of this, just go to the town of Yarmouth website, and everything is there, to allow for a short-term rental unit at 42 Queen Street.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council pass first reading to the proposed development agreement, attachment one, to allow for two short-term rental units at 30 Parade Street.
Seconded. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Cleveland. Okay, so 12C reports for information? Nothing there. Mayor's report. Questions for committee chairs? Any questions for committee chairs? Go ahead.
Just, just to make a comment about, at, at the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, it came up about the Number Two Battalion Monument, that it wasn't lit. I talked to Todd, I'm trying to think of one, oh, I talked to Todd at the, um, Truth Reconciliation Day is where it was. And he's actually looking at, for anybody that's interested, he's looking at a way of putting some kind of a solar light in, so that it will be lit up. So that's, I think that's really good news. I think it was just maybe missed in the original, but it came up there, and it sounds like there's a plan moving forward for that, so.
Good stuff. Todd's graded, making sure those things are taken care of. Counselor Cleveland?
I have no questions, but I would like to say that this is, this is the last council meeting for all of us together. And we already know that Heather is leaving, because she did not reoffer, and I would like to, first off, thank you for all the work that you've done over the last four years. You've done some great work with communities in Bloom and with other things, and I've always valued your comments and everything you've had. You've been really enjoyable, and it's been fun working with you, so thank you. And second off, to all of you, from my perspective, because I don't know if I'll be here, none of us honestly do, that it has been a privilege, that I've felt, it's very unusual in these kind of political spectrums, that coming here and having discussions would feel like a safe space. But with you guys, it does, and that means a lot. So, thank you. That's all.
That was a lot. Thank you. Counselor Bell?
Oh, thank you, your worship. So this is more along the lines of information. I just thought that, um, it would be appropriate to let council know that we have a new staff sergeant at the town detachment. She was introduced to us at the police advisory committee on Tuesday. So, um, welcome to Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Jamie Lutz, who has a lot of experience in the area and is just thrilled to be stationed now in the town of Yarmouth and taking commands. And in addition, we finally have replaced our community, um, policing officer, and so we welcome James Kleiseko. And please, you can all bow and acknowledge that I got his name right. I had to work really hard on that.
You're just saying you did.
I had to work very hard on that, but, um, just amazing, amazing news for us. We know we've been struggling with manpower issues or staffing issues at, at, you know, at the detachment for a long time, and it feels as though, finally, they're going to have, you know, a steady hand on the helm, and we've got our community policing officer back, so, yes, wonderful.
He's a, he's a pretty cool guy.
Wonderful.
He's been in the high school, we talked about getting down to the, that, well, we've had conversation about the expectations at the high school as well, so he'll be in with the staff sergeant, well, we hope. We don't have another committee of the whole, but, you know, if there's anybody at this table, I'll have to make that invitation.
So, yeah, so I, and if I could, if it's okay, I just wanted to share with you his perspective on victim services, because I was just blown away. He's been working in a, in a detachment where victim services was limited to victims who had been the subject of a crime. And coming into the town detachment, which is under a different agreement, he is now free to take care of victims regardless of whether there's a crime or not a crime, and it expands his opportunities so much. He gave such a poignant example to us on Tuesday of being in the Digby Detachment and having an individual who lost his life partner, and within 24 hours, two members of his family died in a fire. So no victim, no crime, no crime, but, oh my goodness, a victim. And he felt so constrained in that role that he was in, and so he is, he is just bursting with enthusiasm to get ingrained in this, this role here, and so thrilled with the parameters of the role and how they've expanded. So that was news to me. I'm just, yeah, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So mine is just more of a concern. We were told that elections in Nova Scotia would be going into the seniors home, and that would, they would be told when they are coming by to help for voting support. And from what I've heard, that, that hasn't happened, and they're not sure when it was. So if we could just look into, you know, letting them know, instead of just dropping by randomly and saying, we were here, I, I think some would like support to know when they're coming, so they could be home, so when you knock on the door, they, you know? And if, if we're pushing to get our numbers up, I think that's something that, you know, we should do as well, but just good business, so if we could just look into that to, to see how that might roll out.
Jody? Jody can do that?
Okay.
Sure.
So he, he is going. Yeah, because we did, we did share that he'll, he'll let them know ahead of time. So, yeah, Jody, Jody can do that tomorrow, maybe, between Jody and Dave, to help them understand when they're coming. Thanks for bringing that one up. Yeah.
Sorry, I, I thought I was jumping on the bandwagon of what Wade, what Wade started, and I thought I was just going to be the last one in line, but it's been a pleasure to serve with everyone. It's been a great council. I know I was a bit heated tonight on one of the topics, and I, as, as Wade mentioned, it's a, it's a safe space to do that, and I feel good about that. And I think the town's in good hands, whatever happens, but we're really going to miss my neighbor for the last four years, Heather, not my neighbor in town, but my neighbor at the council table. She's been a real asset to this community, and hoping that she runs maybe in four years' time in the, in the municipality. But thank you, everyone.
Counselor Heather?
Yeah, this, as has already been stated, this is my last meeting at the table, and it has been an absolute pleasure to be here with, with my fellow counselors and mayor and staff. I, I go with lots of good memories, and I will be watching you fellows on Thursday night, don't you, to see what you're doing, and, or whoever's at the table. And so I just, my good wishes to everybody going in the election, and for those that are back at the table, whoever they are, thanks.
Thank you. It's been my good fortune, I think, to have more exposure to this lady through council business than anyone else at the table. We've served on numerous committees and subcommittees together, and I, I'm going to miss you. I'll leave it at that.
I think that echoes everybody's sentiments, and, and I'll say it while I'm sitting here as well. I mean, you, you came in, you, you do your homework. I think people look sometimes and think, I mean, it's no secret, a lot of folks don't understand maybe what happens at this table. We're not experts, we just dig into those things that matter to us, and you don't just dig in, like, you, you've really gotten the job done, and it's, it's about, it's about setting policy and making sure that all that committee work is done. It's not, it's not the other stuff, that's just who we are as human beings. It's, it's to get the job of council done, and you've done that every single day. And, yeah, I'm just, I'm just thankful for what you did at the table, and I'm thankful that I got a new, great friend, too. So, yeah, we're, I think we all have a, a good friend in Heather. So, and, and, you know, I mean, you guys have been saying she's not at the table because she isn't running. I disagree. I, I think it's our fault. I think she's not going to be at the table because we didn't write the bylaw that said you can't leave, so. And make, and let the, let the public decide whether you should be here, because, mm-hmm, yeah. So thank you, Heather, for everything you did. We, we know you'll be watching. I said to her one day, I said, she said, well, I used to, and I said, you, you've watched council? She said it.
For 20 years.
20 years. Because your dad was a counselor, too, yeah. Oh, my dear. Yes, I'm sure, until this term, until this term. But, you know, you, you folks have said it, said it clearly at the table. This has, this place isn't always the safe place to be. It's, it's not, and I, I've experienced that, and this council, without question, the safest I've experienced. And, and Counselor Derek, I didn't, I'm going to disagree with you, I don't think anything was heated at all. I think that we all did tonight, and I know you agree with me, what we all did tonight... did tonight, what we've done for four years. I don't care if I'm the only one at the table that feels differently. If my opinion isn't out there, I can't change anyone's mind, and we never make the best decisions without everybody's thoughts on the table. And you come from one place, Heather comes from another, Gil comes from, we all come from a different place and mindset and experiences. We've got people that, that work in, Heather, or Counselor Bell, you pulling your gray hair? Let me tell you, my gray hair trumps yours.
Mine's a sun-bleached.
Right, sun-bleached. So I think that's, that's the secret to a, a really great council, the ability to be a team, but, but never have to hold my opinion back, any of our opinions. And if I say one thing to say thank you, that's what it is to each of you, that, that we have, I don't think we've ever argued about anything, we've just put all our thoughts on the table, and I just really appreciate that. So whoever's sitting in these seats next time, I hope that's exactly what happens. I hope that's exactly what happens. Now, can we just all have a group hug? Okay? Approval of invoices, understanding that the deputy and I probably already signed them. Okay? Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. What's next? Date of the next meeting? November 14th? And do we have something in camera?
I have...
Can you just, can, 10 seconds? Can you tell us what goes in camera?